Welcome to City Hall, everybody. And before we begin the meeting, I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody for their support during my campaign and now as the new mayor. And I especially wanted to thank my family. I had to mention my dad, Jim Turgeon, for getting me this beautiful flower. He got me one during the swearing in also, and it just means so much to me. And many people came up to me after the meeting and saw the pictures or saw the flower and asked about it. So I wanted to say how important that is, the family's support I've had, and just want to say, "Thank you daddy." So appreciate that. And before we begin also, I'll have a call on Councilman Rick Mahalovich for tonight's prayer.
Let us pray. As we have elementary students present, let us be reminded that our future is in the youth. Let us, as city leaders, work to provide a city that nurtures their talents and continues to provide services and make decisions that make Jeff City a great place to live, work, and play, pray. In your name, we pray.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order, and roll call, Phyllis, please.
Branch.
Here.
Costalis.
Here.
Graham. Henry.
Here.
Hussy.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Scrivener.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Thank you. And Carlos, Councilman Graham will be joining us shortly. And item four on the agenda, miscellaneous agenda items. The first thing we have this evening is the South School Essay Contest winners. And I wanted to thank Council, former Councilman Rich Kuhn, who's here with us this evening. This is something he started during his council days, reaching out to the students at South School and having this essay contest, and he's been, continued to be involved with that. And also, Councilman Graham and Mahalovich for also participating in this event. So we thank them. And also wanted to mention Ms. Thompson, who is the fifth grade teacher at South School, who has also helped coordinate this essay contest. We have two of our essay winners here with us tonight, and I'd like to call Lydia Craig to the podium. And she is going to tell us tonight about the essay and how the essays were judged and a little bit about those. So we'll welcome Lydia to the podium. I also want to add that Councilwoman Ward was also participating in this event also. So thank you all. And hi Lydia, if you want to tell us about the event, that would be great.
Okay. Is it on?
Yes. Pull it up just a little bit. There you go. Yes, perfect.
Excuse me?
Yes.
It's been a tradition of the past, Mayor, that they could take your chair and read from your chair, if you would like to relinquish it for this activity. And I think Ms. Thompson has a few words to say about, as well.
Absolutely. I would be happy to relinquish my chair. And I also want to mention Jerika Austin, who's joining us tonight. So we'll have these two ladies tell us about the essay, how they're judged, and that information. And then I would welcome you both to join me in my seat tonight and actually read your, both of your essays to us. So you all can take it away with the information.
Good evening. My name is Lydia Craig.
My name is Jerika Austin. We are from, we are fifth grade students at South Elementary School.
We participated in an essay contest sponsored by former City Councilman Rich Kuhn. He donated some fabulous prizes and medals.
The theme of the essay was "My Proposal to the Jefferson City Council." We thought, we thought about all the wonderful things Jefferson City has to offer.
City Councilman Kuhn arranged for a guest speak, for guest speakers to come to our school. We heard from City Councilperson Mikal, Mikolovich, and City Councilperson Graham.
Lydia and I placed on the top two at our school. We would like to share our essay, essays with you tonight. Lydia will go first, and I will follow her. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Well, you all are welcome to come on around, and I'll let you have my seat. And we'll look forward to hearing your winning essays tonight. Okay. And Lydia's gonna go first, and you can speak right here into the microphone. It's turned on. And the tradition is, when you start your essay, before you begin, we'll give you a chance to bang the gavel, and you can start with that. So that gets everybody's attention, and then you can read your winning essay.
Hello to all. I would like a few minutes of your time so we, so you can hear a couple of great ideas. I think the city council could make our city even greater and improve our tourism. I propose to the city council to build an amusement park and a nature reserve. My first proposal to the city council is to build an amusement park. It would really help, in my personal opinion. It would help families save money. Families would give all their money to drive to an amusement park. They also have to pay for admission to go have fun with family and friends. The tax that citizens pay to the amusement park goes towards their city, not ours. So in, if Jefferson City gets an amusement park, we can earn money and have fun at the same time. Also, we know we don't have room in Jefferson City to make an amusement park. But maybe we could tear down a spot that has a lot of dead trees or unoccupied buildings. Then we could be able to start building on it. I truly think an amusement park would be great for Jefferson City. My, my second person, proposal to the Jefferson City City Council would be to promote more outdoor activities by building a nature reserve. The nature reserve could be a place where you could go with your family and have a picnic and have quality time as a family. Jefferson City would be more adventurous if you, if it had a nature reserve. Now in conclusion, Jefferson City really needs more tourists. Now, so let's get an amusement park and a nature reserve. It would really help the families of Jefferson City. Thank you for your time.
And now, we have Jerika Austin is going to read hers. So Jerika, we'll give you the same honor, and you can call that meeting to order with your gavel there.
Jefferson City is a wonderful place to live. Even though Jefferson City is a wonderful place to live, there are some things that can make it better. One thing I think Jefferson City needs, another roller skating rink. Do you want to know why? The reason why is because the other roller skating rink has bumps on the floor, and people can fall and get hurt. I think we should have another roller skating rink, because if you live, fall away, you don't have to drive asphalt. The floors would not be as bumpy, so we won't fall as much. Also, I, it should not be as quiet at most days, like Fridays. The other roller rink is busy, because most students don't have school and their parents don't have work. If we don't, if we don't have another roller skating rink, some people, kids might get in trouble. This is why we need another roller skating rink. I also think that we should have a kid museum in Jefferson City. Some museums do not let kids touch the art. So if we have a kid museum, they could touch the stuff. Jefferson City doesn't really have a museum other than the Capitol. Also, kids can learn stuff like science. They can also learn about animals that lived a long time ago, and lots of other things. This is why we should have a kid museum. Do you think we should have another roller skating rink and a kid museum? Both of these ideas are for kids. Thank you for listening to my ideas.
Thank you. Those were wonderful essays. And if you want to stay up here for just a moment, and if Ms. Thompson wants to come up and get a picture with the two winners, and we'll get the state, or the city seal in the background, that would be fine. And, yeah, you all can stand up here, and I'll get, come on up and take a picture. All right, sure, come on up. Thank you. And before you leave, I do want to present you each one of our city coins. So here's one for you, and for you. And thank you for being here and reading your essays. You both had some wonderful, fantastic ideas, and I see future leaders here and future ideas at the, at the table tonight, and I think that's so exciting. So thank you for being here tonight, and good luck with everything, and maybe some of those ideas will someday come to fruition. So thank you very much. And I know some of them have friends and family in the audience, and we sure appreciate all of you for your support and being here for the students, and, and that's a wonderful event, and appreciate former Councilman Kuhn keeping that going every year, year after year. That's really a fun event. So thank you all for being here today. All right. Item 4B, we have a proclamation for National Bike Month. And if Sunny Sanders wants to come to the podium, and I'm going to read part of this proclamation here, and then we'll present it to you, Sunny. So I'll start by reading this. Whereas May was first recognized as Bike Month in 1956, and whereas the Missouri General Assembly, along with the governor of Missouri, has dedicated, designated May as Missouri Bike Month, and the third week of May as Missouri Bike Week. Now therefore, I, Carrie Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, do hereby recognize the month of May as National Bike Month. And furthermore, the week of May 11th to 15th, 2015, is recognized as Bike to Work Week, and all who support bicycling are urged to participate in the events planned, and all road users are urged to share the roads safely with bicyclists. So I have the proclamation, and Sunny, if you would like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council people. Let me get this going here. The bicycle started out very basic as a hobby horse, as you can see here. Has no pedals. It wasn't much fun going uphill, but it was fun going downhill. That was about 200 years ago. Wrong way. There we go. About 150 years ago, pedals were added. It was a velociped. The trouble with this bike was, you really couldn't steer and pedal at the same time without injuring yourself. Then, in the 1880s, a safety bike was invented. You can see there's a lot of similarities to the bicycles that are out here today. It actually has a front brake, has a chain, and a padded seat, which is something I really appreciate in today's bicycles. Bicycles were very important back in the 1880s, and an association called the League of American Wheelmen, which now is the League of American Bicyclists, actually formed to promote the fun, fitness, and transportation provided by a bicycle. They actually, in the 1950s, were the ones that designated May as National Bike Month. By 1900, they had approximately one and a half million members. The bicycle for Jeff City provides basic transportation for people that choose to ride bikes, for health and environmental reasons, and for people that don't have any option other than to choose, other than to ride bikes. Jefferson City is fortunate where we have, where we host several events regarding professional bicycling, amateur bicycling, and it's an entertainment that people can go and appreciate that we often take advantage of. The park system is very good, providing local athletes or wannabe road warriors an opportunity to go bike out in the woods. There's road riders that have actually set up more than 30 different trails that originate in Jeff City that go out as far as 50-plus miles and returning back. So there's a lot of athletic events going on that are not necessarily sanctioned or organized, but just they get out and ride themselves. The greenways, the greenways are very important to the city. They allow people just to have fun when they go out and bike ride. Now, what's kind of neat is you can take our greenway, go to the Bike Plaza out at Clay Street, get on the Katy Trail, and once you're on the Katy Trail, many people don't realize it, but they're actually on two national trails. One trail goes from, I believe it's Delaware, no, Delaware out to California. It's about 6,000 miles where you can ride a bike through the country without being on a road. And we're in the middle of that. Another trail is the Lewis and Clark Trail that starts in Missouri and goes out to Washington. Now, these trails, you may have seen a lot of bicyclists in town various times, but there are several organizations, the State of Missouri, bicycle clubs, private businesses, that actually organize tourists to come and visit Jeff City. About 400,000 people a year ride the trail of Missouri. Many thousands of those come to our town and spend money and help our economic situation. So with that, I just want to wrap up and say, thank you for allowing us to have Bike Month.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. And Sunny Sanders is our senior transportation planner, so we appreciate your work on this. And I would like to present you the proclamation, if you want to come up.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if we have anyone to get a photograph, or maybe Phyllis can take one here. Thank you very much. Thank you. Item 4C, we have a proclamation for May being Building Safety Month. And Larry Burkhart, our official building official, and Will Bradford, firefighter, will both come to the podium. Jason, sorry, we have, Jason will be filling in, substitute, if that's okay? Thank you. And I'll read part of this proclamation today. Whereas building safety and fire prevention officials, engineers, builders, and others in the construction industry work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies, whereas Building Safety Month encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable. And now, therefore, I, Carrie Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the month of May as National Building Safety Month. So I'll turn it over to both of you.
Well, since there's two of us, we'll try to make this awfully short. But I thought it was pretty important to know, why do we have building codes? I always like to know a little bit of history and a little bit of the reasoning behind what I'm doing. It helps me give a better conceptual view. So if you'll pardon me, I'll give a brief history. And this doesn't really show up too well. But the earliest known building codes actually were back in Babylon, Babylonian times, and if you want to look at the king at that time, and I'll probably butcher the pronunciation, but it's Hammurabi, but it was about 1750 B.C. And the one thing I do want to point out, that one of the laws is, is that if a builder, if a builder has built a house for a man, and has not made his work sound, and the house he built has fallen and caused the death of its owner, the builder should be put to death. So that's kind of a unique performance spec. I don't know if you guys want to go that far, but, so, let's see, this should go forward. Oh, come on. How can things always work well? And this character was Nero, back in about 64 A.D. There was a great fire of Rome. It lasted six days. And they really can't say, from historical accounts, if you really played the harp during the burning of Rome. But the main cause of the fire was overcrowding and flammable construction. What this, though, did was kind of like clear the urban landscape, and did allow the government to come back at that time with a little bit more regulations, because that private construction wasn't really regulated. So they had better planning, construction techniques with government oversight. And yes, I am technically challenged here, it looks like. Okay. And the next place that I'd like to point out is the Great London Fire. Oh, yeah, okay. You got it? All right. Thank you, Bill. All right. Back in 1666, the City of London burned and was gutted. It was estimated to destroy about 70,000 of the 80,000 inhabitants. The death toll is unknown, but traditionally thought to have been small, as only six verified deaths were recorded. However, they do not record deaths of the poor and middle class. So the next place, Bill, if you'd be so kind, is the Great Chicago Fire of 1871. That fire destroyed 3.3 square miles of Chicago and left about 100,000 residents homeless. If you don't know about Chicago, it was built mainly on a swamp, so they, they had a lot of wood, as far as the predominant building material. They also made sidewalks and streets, and hopefully Matt won't do that. And it was also dry at that time, so a lot of the fire just, just spread, and there's, let's see, accounts of that Mrs. O'Leary's cow really didn't kick over the lamp to burn everything, but anyways, that's what people will attribute it to, and there are some other stories. But most of the fire was kept going because of the type of construction that was being used at the time. I'm from Chicago originally, and before I left, they had four-hour firewalls, and our current code only has three-hour, and all electrical wires or conductors are in conduit. Here, we just use shielded. So they went a little bit overboard, but it's a little tougher construction requirements. So lessons learned. History does repeat itself. We should have learned from those other catastrophes. I do appreciate that we have a little bit more oversight with zoning, which kind of helps give us guidance as far as what type of infrastructure, the fire plugs, you know, like in commercial are 300 feet apart, residential are more 600 feet apart. And building methods can save people, so we worry about firewalls and sprinklers and fire alarm systems. But enforcement of codes by government, I think, are required to help protect people, because that's the only way to coordinate as far as what the needs of the people are. And right now, some of the future major actions that I'm thinking about, as far as updating the codes, we'd like to form some more liaison groups with builders and design professionals, and so that we get some more feedback with stakeholders. And we will be reviewing the current adopted codes and see if we want to upgrade to the 2012 or 2015 model ICC codes. So, and there's a lot more stuff that we're doing, but I at least wanted to kind of narrow it down to why we have building codes and what we're planning to do about them. So anyways, I'd like to turn this over to Chief Turner.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing us time to be here tonight. This week's theme, there's four weeks in May, and each week has a theme. Week one's theme is "Don't Get Burned, Build the Code." And to share with you real quick, that, you know, across the nation each year, 2,500 people die because of the result of fires, some 355,000 fires across the nation causing almost $6.5 billion worth of damage. So you can see the importance of why we try to work together and try to make these codes important for our community, because we're making them safe. One of the number-one issues that we face is children under the five die as a result of fires. And it's because we don't have plans inside of our houses, plans for the families to practice, to teaching the children how to get out in case of a fire. It's important that, you know, if we talk about having a plan, but we have to practice that plan. The other thing that we find in the fire service is smoke detectors. They have smoke detectors installed, but they aren't operating properly. They either have a dead battery, they're outdated, they're over 10 years old, and we recommend that any fire, smoke alarm that's installed in any house be replaced every 10 years. You know, we're really fortunate that years ago, that the fire department took the approach with rental property with smoke alarms to regulate that, you know, the property owner's responsible for providing smoke alarms, and the tenant's responsible for the upkeep of it. Since then, we've really expanded that service throughout the community with a bunch of partnerships here recently with the Red Cross, and more importantly, a relationship that we've held for the last seven to eight years is with Lowe's Home Improvements by giving us smoke detectors each October to offer free to our community. And we'll install those to anybody here in Jefferson City. Somebody asked me once, why, why it's so hard to get smoke detectors installed in homes, and it's just basically because people don't ask for us to do that. And I think the more that we get the message out there to install smoke detectors to save for our community is. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, Mr. Burkhart. And if you would like to both come forward, I'd like to present this proclamation to you today. Thank you very much. Appreciate the work that you do in both of your departments. Our building codes are so important for our public safety and also our fire department. It's a great presentation and a great reminder, and I hope everybody tonight goes home and takes those words into account, that they make sure they have a plan in place and practice that plan and check their smoke detectors. So thank you very much. I know spring and fall are a great time to change the batteries, so check those and appreciate those presentations. Item five, public hearing, we don't have any this evening. Item six, appointments by the mayor. We don't have any appointments this evening. Or we have two, actually. Thank you, Phyllis. Oh, our, yes, that's right, our liaisons and boards. Yes, we do. The council has gone through and chosen which boards they would like to be appointed to, and we do have, everybody has the list in their packets, and I believe everybody's in agreement on the ones that they want to serve, and given the council the chance to choose those. And appreciate everybody's service as liaisons to our boards and commissions. So I believe we need a motion and a second to...
Move to accept.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. And a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. So this, our council liaisons stand as they're listed here today. Thank you. Item seven, presentation from staff, consultants, and invited guests. I don't think we have any presentations this evening. Item eight, announcements by the mayor, council, and staff. Item A, Councilman Scrivener's going to give us an update on the Salute to America event.
I'm raised on the salute to America, and there is a three-day event.
Mike?
I hit it, but it didn't come on, I'm sorry. Three-day event, starts July the 2nd, in conjunction with Thursday Night Live. We'll actually have a carnival that will be open on Thursday night downtown. There's a new activity for Friday, July 3rd, and Saturday, July the 4th. It'll be a tournament. In fact, there'll be three different competitions, horseshoes, corn bags, and washers, and people can enter one or more event. If you want, you can enter all three events, and they will crown a grand champion of, of the tournament. There is an entry fee for each event, and there will be cash prizes for the winners. The festival district has been enlarged. It now runs from Mill Bottom to the Prism. Mill Bottom, if, if we get the necessary permit, there will be a new event on Saturday morning, July the 4th. It'll be a bike ride from Mill Bottom, across the bridge, and then north of the river. It's a family event. There will be no entry fee or any prizes given, it's just something for people to participate in. And at the Prism, the Prism will be conducting regular prison tours, and they will also have two haunted tours. So those would be evening tours. And then, the Salute to America kickoff will be on Thursday night, or in conjunction with Thursday Night Live. And then, the Salute to America kickoff will be on Thursday night or in conjunction with Thursday Night Live. So, on Thursday, June the 4th, we'll announce the entertainment schedule and the talent that will be performing at Salute to America. That's kind of a quick overview of what's planned. And then, of course, the normal fireworks and all the other things that are a normal part of Salute to America. But those are kind of the changes for this year.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivener, and we appreciate you serving as the liaison to the Fourth of July Commission. And Councilman Scrivener will be giving us a Fourth of July update at every meeting. I think we have three more meetings leading up to that event, so he will be keeping us posted on that as well. Item B, MoDOT, Missouri Boulevard ADA Improvements. Mr. Marash has announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The MoDOT is holding an open-house public meeting to discuss ADA improvements along Missouri Boulevard. They've been through a design process and are going back and looking at ramps and various other aspects of the sidewalk that they would like to update. The meeting is 4:00 to 6:00, open-house format, Tuesday, May 12th in their Muri Conference Room at their facility at 1511 Missouri Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Marash. And I have a few announcements, too, that I would like to make. And just kind of a summary and overview of what your mayor is doing since I've been elected. There's a few items, I've been able to welcome some groups to our wonderful city, including the Color Vibe, which was close to 4,000 visitors and runners. I also welcome the Boys and Girls Club, their statewide awards ceremony. And the Katy Trail Event on April 15th, where Governor Nixon and George Jan Nixon had the Governor's 100 Miles Missouri Challenge. And you can also check out information about that event at hashtag 100 MoMiles. On April 22nd, I was at a press conference for the partnership of the sewer project between Holt Summit and Jefferson City, along with Steve Kroll. And the United States Department of Agriculture for Rural Development presented a plaque to the city of Jefferson and Holt Summit in appreciation for that cooperative project. So, that's a great thing for both cities and look forward to doing more partnerships with Holt Summit. And on April 28th, there was a groundbreaking ceremony, North Jefferson City Beautification Project, which was the 25th anniversary of the Katy Trail. And Parks Director Bill Lockwood also attended that event. And they will be building a pavilion out there, so there's going to be a lot of improvements in the North Jefferson City area. April 30th was Ride the Bus Day, and there was a great crowd. It was a perfect weather day for that. And several councilmen were in attendance, so those who were there may want to raise their hand. And I know I appreciate several of you were there. So, thank you to the council for participating in that event and the public for being there. That morning, I also had a chance to welcome the Public Works statewide convention, which was public works staff from all over the state. This Saturday was the, or this last Saturday, was the Shelby Fest, which drew hundreds of people from all over the state and actually from all over the country to our city and showing off their Shelby Mustangs, and people came to enjoy that. And I did receive a nice note from Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Diane Gillespie, who commended our city staff and the public works departments that put that together and also the Police Department of Public Safety for their fine job in coordinating such a large event to our city. And then, over the weekend, was also the Lincoln Blue Tigers Quarterback Club Event. And even though that's not directly related to the city, I want to mention that as we look for ways to partner with Lincoln. If anyone's personally interested, they can get more information on how to join the Lincoln Quarterback Club by calling Susan Cook at 301-7376. And an event I did not attend was also Saturday, the Parks and Rec Event Walk Jefferson City 3.0 Kickoff was Thursday. So, I hope that you might get information about the trails and that specific event. I want to mention one event that Councilman Hussey has started over the years, and it is called Serve Jefferson City, and that occurred also since our last meeting. And I appreciate his work on that. I don't know if you have any announcements for that event, but you always do a fine job in cleaning up our city and coordinating that. So, appreciate everybody who gets involved in all these different events and also the council for being there and supporting these events. Item nine, presentations from the Galleran Specific Bills. We have Alan Mudd in attendance, if he would like to come to the podium. He's here to speak on Resolution RS 2015-5. Welcome, Alan, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Alan Mudd, 3559 Gettysburg Place. I'm a member of the Old Munichberg Association. I also serve on the city's Old Town Committee and appreciate all the support for the efforts that are being made to improve our city, specifically in the Old Munichberg Association effort to landscape a certain block, 100 block, of East Dunkland on the north side. We are appreciative of the opportunity, if the city council so approves, using salvage stones from the Bassman House for the Dunkland Street Landscape Design. The design that has been mentioned is very impressive and I think will enhance that whole area. I own a couple of buildings in that area. And the renovations that have been done on East Dunkland, I think, have enhanced that whole area of the city. This would also so encourage the city council to approve the resolution, and we thank you for all your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Mudd from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Ward?
I'd just like to thank Alan for being here and explaining the details of what Old Munichberg is planning to do with the Bassman Stones. I feel that this would be a good incorporation of those pieces of history into the central fabric of our downtown again, so I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 10, the Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Any further discussion? And we'll take a voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Phyllis, excuse me. Okay, so we have one abstention and the rest in favor, thank you. We'll move on to item 11, the bills introduced, 2015-3. Phyllis will read that for us.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Kaufman Enterprises LLC in the amount of $149,106.40 for the Don Ray Drive Stormwater Project.
Thank you. Staff, Mr. Marash, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is a construction contract with Kaufman Enterprises. They'll be replacing the Don Ray Drive Box Culvert that had failed earlier, late last year. Collapsed metal culvert. The price tag for the replacement is $149,106. And that will come from the half-cent capital improvement sales tax. The project scheduled lasts about two months. And Kaufman Enterprises was the low bid for the project. Have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marash? Thank you. Item B, 2015-4.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of certain documents related to the maturity of the city's taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Command Web Offset Company Incorporated Project Series 2009.
Thank you. Mr. Helfert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. About five years ago, the city and the chamber entered into an agreement with Command Web for some tax abatement. Essentially, it involved the city becoming owner of 45,000-square-foot addition to Command Web, and that was a five-year abatement. And that has now come to an end, so it's time to do the things that wrap that up. So, essentially, we'll be terminating our lease, turning the property back over to them, and then they'll end that tax abatement. All the documents were prepared by bond counsel. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr., yes, Councilman Scrivener?
Do you know how much tax will now be due to the city as a result?
Bill was looking into that, and we don't yet know. There were some questions, I think, with the collector. We may be able to answer that by next time.
And the only taxes that, were the taxes abated just on the addition or on the...
Correct, just on the part that was transferred to us.
Further questions? Thank you. 2015-5.
An ordinance amending Section 19-401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule S Loading Zones, Subparagraph C, Passenger Loading Zones of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to a portion of Jefferson Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is, this ordinance will enact a passenger loading zone on Jefferson Street, basically adjacent to the Water Street and the Amtrak Station. Obviously, while we were doing that project, we kind of noticed an issue with people needing additional space to load and unload their passengers for the train. The, it'll occur on both sides of Jefferson Street within about 50 feet of Water Street. Have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Marash? Councilman Mahalovich?
What's the difference of a passenger loading zone versus a business loading zone and...
In the business loading zones, you're required to have some kind of signage on your vehicle indicating that you're a business. For example, if someone were to pull in a loading zone in the downtown area, if there's not a plaque identifying some type of business, then our parking enforcement officers may stop and question you about that.
Passenger, do they need to stay in the car, or how's that work?
No, they should stay with the car. It's for loading and unloading. But typically, you know, that's basically how the area was functioning in the past. Yet, you couldn't leave your car there for long periods of time.
Further question? Item 2015-6.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Syntec and Associates for heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration maintenance services.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As the clerk indicated, this is our, we have, the city has an annual contract with a HVAC provider for maintenance and repairs. And we received two bids, and Syntec was, in our evaluation, was low bid. Basically, like I indicated, they were to repair and maintenance our HVAC for citywide, all the buildings of the city. Each department may call on them from time to time. They would fund those out of their, typically out of their building and grounds line item for those items. So, they, one-year contract with up to three years renewal.
Any questions for Mr. Marash? Yes, Councilman Scrivener?
It may have just been a phrase that you used, but you said in our evaluation, were they the actual low bidder, or did you evaluate them as being the best bidder?
Both. The contract wasn't bid with specific hours. And so, if you look at the contract closely, there's some, there's one hourly rate for maintenance and one for, I guess, larger items. And so, those are, there's two different hourly costs. So, we looked at last year's hours and applied those hours to those costs to determine the low bid. But, you know, it could be those costs would switch in the next year because you don't really know what's going to happen.
Okay.
So, based on that, they were the low bid.
Okay, based on your, but based on your evaluation, not necessarily on the dollar amount of the hourly rate.
Yeah, we're not guaranteeing them the approximately $50,000 in this type contract as it's been expended in previous years.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to bills pending. We have two bills pending. 2015-1, Phyllis?
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with TriStim LTD for utility auditing services.
Mr. Kroll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This contract will authorize TriStim to review our utility expenditures. They will be paid from the savings they identified, so there's no direct outlay of city funds.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kroll? Discussion by council? Okay, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 2015-2.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a cost-share agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for the purpose of providing air traffic control services at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is an agreement with FAA, and they will basically are agreeing to pay 82% of our air traffic control services contract. The remaining 18% is covered by a 50-50 grant with MoDOT. So, approximately, the cost of that is about $3,600 a month after you consider the grant. Have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or council discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Okay, on the informal, we have nothing, so we're going to move on to resolutions. Phyllis, RS 2015-2.
Supporting and endorsing application by the Special Olympics of Missouri for participation in the Missouri Development Finance Board Tax Credit Program.
We'll entertain a motion in a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Helfert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Special Olympics Board, as you all know, has chosen Jefferson City to build their $11 million facility, a training facility. And they had some, they already have obtained some finance board tax credits in Boone County. However, they've shifted that down here, and so the local governmental body needs to be the co-applicant on that. So, this is really just, from our end, all it does is require us to disclose some financials, which we've done. There's no other obligations on our part. This will allow the Special Olympics to get those tax benefits for their facility in Jeff.
Questions or comments from council? Councilman Scrivener?
The tax benefit or the tax credit is going to contributors. It's not a credit coming from the city or...
Correct, it is not. It's a statewide benefit. Or it's a state benefit.
If I donate toward this project, I'm eligible. If I, as long as I meet the criteria, I'd be eligible for a tax credit.
Assuming you meet the criteria.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion pass, resolution passes. Item B, RS 2015-3.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to apply for the Bulletproof Vest Partnership BVP Grant.
Thank you. And if you would like to...
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Captain Bob Clark, thank you.
The police department desires to apply for a Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, which is offered by the Department of Justice. The amount applied for is $11,475. If the grant is awarded to the city, the staff will return to the council for the acceptance of the grant. This is a 50% matching grant fund. And if we do get the match, funds will be expended from the police department half-cent sales tax F. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Captain Clark today from the council? Yes, thank you, Councilman Graham.
Would that replace all of the officer's vests?
No, that'll replace about 40, 40, 40 of them.
Forty.
And it's kind of a revolving every year. You know, we're kind of on a cycle, and they got a five-year life expectancy on the vest. So, usually about 40 and 40 every other year or every other five years.
So, how do we recycle the old vest? Are they given to another agency, or they just...
Usually not. I mean, because the life expectancy is worn out, I'm sure there's some liability issues. I know in years past, with the conflicts overseas, they were, we were giving them to the Department of Defense, and they were using them to line some of their vehicles with that, and it helped out with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll entertain a motion in a second for the 2015-3, please. Any further discussion or questions today? Okay, we'll have roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Thank you. RS 2015-4.
A resolution authorizing the use of the roof of the Jefferson Street Parking Garage.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As clerk indicated, this is permissive use for the top of the Jefferson Street Parking Garage on July 4th, basically for the committee, Salute to America Committee, to utilize for a beverage concession as well as backyard game tournament area.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Any questions or comments from council? Okay, roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Thank you. RS 2015-5.
A resolution allowing the Old Munichberg Association to use stones from the demolished Bassman House as part of their Dunkland Street landscape design.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Mr. Mudd was here earlier tonight, explained it pretty well, but basically, I believe it was 2007, the city demolished the Bassman House along McCarty Street here and saved some stones from that, and they're located right now, we're in Astoria Yard across the river, and this would allow that association to use those for their landscaping.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Okay, roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 13, presentations from the gallery on other topics, and we have four this evening. We'll start with Roger Schwartz regarding Sales Tax G Capital Improvements Plan. Welcome, Roger, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor. My name's Roger Schwartz, and I live at 515 Eastland Drive. Thank you for allowing me a couple of minutes here this evening to talk about what hopefully will become Sales Tax G of the capital improvements program. That's really the only way this city has to fund capital improvements is through this sales tax, so it's very critically important. But in the past, what has usually been done is each of the departments has allotted a certain percentage of the funds that are projected to come in, and it's been going on now for, it will be 30 years when Sales Tax F is completed. So, I guess I would encourage you as council people to look at the needs of the city and see if that distribution still is appropriate based on what the current needs are in the city. Certainly, when you look at the departments, everybody's going to be able to come up with needs, but it'll be up to you as a council to determine if that is the highest priority way to allocate those funds. And I guess I would urge all of you to consider, one of the things that I recognize as I'm driving around the city is that I think we're falling behind in our street department. I think we need to put more money into our street overlay program. When you look at our streets, I know there was a big article in the paper on Sunday, but I'd rather look at them as how many lane miles you have to take care of, and you've actually got over 690 lane miles of street in the city. Currently, the funding for the street overlay program is about 1.2 million a year, and that allows you to do between 21 to 22 lane miles a year of street. So, all you have to do is divide those numbers, and you say, "Well, you're going to be able to work on every street on an average of once every 34 years." Well, there's no asphalt overlay that you can do on a street that's ever going to last that long. And the arterial streets in town certainly need that done at a lot higher frequency than what the residential streets do. So, that means the residential streets are going to be waiting even a lot longer yet. So, as you look at plans moving forward for the next capital improvement sales tax, I would urge you to look to see if that distribution should stay the same, and then also look at allocating additional funds to the street system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for your comments, especially as your past history with MoDOT and as our past Public Works Director, we appreciate you taking the time and comments. Do we have any council questions or comments for Mr. Schwartz tonight? Councilman Scrivner?
I would just make one comment. Roger, you probably know exactly when we did it, but it's only been the last couple of years that we have budgeted 1.2 million. It was 600,000 a year.
Yeah, prior to that, it was, and there was more money, I think, in the expansion-type projects, but certainly, I don't know what Matt's going to come up with as far as a list of expansion-type projects, but there aren't the big items on that list as there has been in the past, and there's probably some other things that have changed in the city that probably could be looked at.
I'm not saying that to say that we're spending too much, I'm just saying that it's better than it was, and it's still not enough.
It's still not enough. You're right.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Thank you. Our next speaker is Vicki Shildmeyer regarding Ride the Bus Day. Welcome, Vicki, if you state your name and address, please.
Yes, thank you. Vicki Shildmeyer, 1803 Tanner Bridge Road. I would like to thank Mayor Turgeon, Councilman Bob Scrivner, the Chair of the Public Works Committee, Councilman Schreiber, Councilman Graham, Councilman Hussey, Councilman Costalis, and Councilman Henry for attending the Ride the Bus event last Thursday, April 30th. We also appreciated the presence of City Administrator Kroll, Mrs. McMillan, Mr. Sanders, and Mr. Rottenberry from the Planning Department, or Transportation Department. But a special appreciation is due to the Jeff Trans staff, especially Transit Director Maymert and Mr. Stegman and Mrs. Vernon, who helped us put the event together and set it up that morning. In addition, Mr. Wayne Lee was the member of the Public Transit Advisory Committee who came to hear from residents firsthand. The whole event was a wonderful collaboration. It would not have been possible without the hospitality of the Fire Department Museum, which hosted us graciously, especially Mr. Steve Holtmeyer and Tim Young. But the whole department worked on it, because I ran into the chief the night before at the hardware store. Chick-fil-A and their owner, Tom Van Vorn, provided lunches for everyone there, and that was another important aspect of allowing people to have conversations, which was the purpose of the event. The Independent Living Resource Center, especially Jeremy Murray, their Americans Disability Act Coordinator, helped and had people there to talk about the needs of their consumers. Missouri River Regional Library, their Director Claudia Schoonover, and Public Relations spokesperson Paula Schultz, he came and helped out. In addition, Lincoln University Student Office, First Baptist Church, which provided chairs and a bus, and First Presbyterian Church, which provided a shuttle bus, were just people throughout the whole community helped to make this happen. And lastly, Citizens for Jeff Trans, a group of volunteers that I worked with, spent quite a bit of time planning and engaging people. None of this would have made any difference if people from throughout the city had not come, because they knew they'd have the opportunity to talk with you and hear from you and share ideas about what matters to them in public transit. It was a great event, and we're very grateful for everyone's participation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vicki, and I would like to present on behalf of the entire committee to you and from the entire council as City Coin, so if you'd like to come forward, we have that for you for all of the work on behalf of the committee. And this was an example of a wonderful collaboration. Thank you, there you go. Thank you. A wonderful collaboration between all the entities that you mentioned, and that's why it worked so well. So, thank you, and we look forward to more and better things happening with transit. So, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Wayne Lee regarding Ride the Bus Day. Wayne, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to all of you, thanking you, just like Vicki did, what you did, all of the council members, the staff. It's amazing when we come before a group of people, how we come at one time and we're very, very frustrated about something, and then we come at another time and we're not so frustrated, we're excited, because it's the beginning of a new beginning. This is the time when things are beginning to change. As Vicki pointed out, there were a lot of people there for a new beginning. I don't know whether I came for a good sandwich or to actually get to know some people a little bit better, but I did. And there's one person that I'll always know is, as my former professor at Southern Seminary used to say, because he wrote the book on it, he said, he said, "I'm a workaholic." And he even came up with that word, Dr. Wayne Oats. And let me tell you, this lady is a workaholic. Vicki is a workaholic, and she was instrumental in putting that together. She is a workhorse, and she does a lot. And I very much appreciate what she does, and I very much appreciate what you did. Can't thank you enough. Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, for your comments, and are there any questions or comments from the council on both, for both presentations? And again, I appreciate all the council who were in attendance for that event. That was a great event. Thank you. Item three, or number four, Erin Wiseman regarding Sales Tax Revenue. Erin, if you would like to state your name and address for us, please, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Erin Wiseman, and I live at 409 Meyer. I'm in the third ward. I want to thank you guys tonight for listening to me about Sales Tax G. I just have a suggestion for your consideration for an earmark. Specifically, my suggestion deals with safety in sidewalks between the Y where Boonville Road diverges to Hazelton to Belair Road. There are not a lot of sidewalks there. There are a few after that Y, but there are a lot of people that walk, walk their dog, walk with families, ride their bikes, et cetera, in that area. There's also a lot of traffic. My suggestion is that we have additional safety measures and/or sidewalks put in that area, because, for instance, when I was walking in the area on Thursday night, there was a child riding a bike in the road, and he fell, and before he was able to get up, a car drove by. There was also a toddler and a father walking in the road, holding hands around Belair Street. I don't have any statistics for you regarding the traffic or the use of the road, but if you guys decide to drive by there and take this into consideration, you'll see that it is a highly-traveled road, specifically in the morning, and also after school and after work, as there are two schools near those areas. I want to thank you guys again for listening tonight, and thank you for taking this into consideration for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman, and I wonder if we could ask if Ms. McMillan could get us either information, if you could share it with the council at a later time, and also with Ms. Wiseman regarding maybe where that area may fit in, if it's part of the future sidewalk plan, or if not, if there are some safety measures that could be in place? So, if you have anything now or later that you'd want to share?
We're currently updating our sidewalk, our pedestrian and bicycle plan, so I'll put you in contact with Sonny Sanders, and he can communicate with you about providing some input into that planning process.
Thank you.
That would be great. Any councilmen, questions or comments? Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilman Hussey?
I would just quickly comment, thank you, Erin, for being here this evening, and in the context of capital improvements and what we heard from Roger as well about overlays and such, I would, you know, showing some cards here at this point, I think that, you know, oftentimes, a thing like a sidewalk can get very overlooked when you look at the broader capital improvements in the community, and I would just encourage the councils, we start to go through this process, to give greater consideration to things such as this. That can be done in a cost-share sort of way. You know, we can get in the habit of expanding a lot of roads and building out, but sidewalks tend to do just what Ms. Wiseman said, and they build a sense of community and neighborhood and people walking, and at times, it may be wise for us to take a step back and think, before we build out that new lane on a road or expand a road out to an area that doesn't exist already, is there a place that actually a sidewalk would have greater benefit to, even to touch on the Ride the Bus, to gain greater access to bus stops and those types of things? And so, you know, this is not a planned event here tonight for Erin and all of us to be here, but I think that the four speakers themselves are talking about a lot of very similar things that we need to be considerate of when we use our finite tax dollars to best serve the community. So, thank you for being here, to all four of them, for sitting through a meeting to speak at the end, and I know that the council is listening, and we've got a lot of work to put that plan together, but input like this is important, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, yes, Councilman Graham?
I guess this is for city staff, maybe Ms. McMillan could help me out with this. Wasn't at some point, there was like a Safe Path to School Grant or something like that?
Yes. There was a Safe Routes to School Grant. That grant has been combined with other grants in the Transportation Alternatives Program grants, and so we had some grants that were recently awarded, so probably won't have an opportunity to apply for those grants for a couple of years. If Congress passes another transportation bill, we're hoping that that program will be included again. But as far as sidewalk planning, we're in the process of updating our sidewalk plan, and, you know, with the capital improvement program coming up for renewal, you know, those are also projects that can be included, either as a capital improvement program directly funded by the councils, or as a cost-share project with the property owners.
Councilman Scrivner?
I'm not sure, Janice, maybe you can help me, just how many years ago it was, maybe three, four years ago, that all councilmen went through a process of going through and identifying their priorities in each ward for sidewalk upgrades, and that Boonville road that she's talking about is one that was identified?
It was identified as a high priority.
It was identified, but we also don't want to lose track of the fact that what Mr. Schwartz is talking about is roads that are already built and that are the same as having inventory or maintenance on a home or anything else that you own, that you're trying to maintain to keep it from deteriorating to the point that it has to be torn up and start over. So, the, you know, new construction, adding a lane to a road or something is one thing, but maintaining what you've already got is entirely different thing.
Thank you. Any further comments? Carlos, Councilman Graham?
Yes, I guess along those same lines of Councilman Scrivener, thank you for bringing that up. Mr. McMillan, is there any way you could email out to the council members of that list? Because I wasn't on the council three or four years ago, and I would love to see if those have been identified that I've been receiving telephone calls about, which is South Ridge and places like that, so I would love to see if they're on that list.
Sure. The previous sidewalk plan is on our webpage, and, you know, the way that, the way that any public improvement gets funded is for it to rise to the occasion where the council funds it. So, even though we've identified projects and sidewalks as priorities in our plan because of pedestrian traffic or because it's on an arterial or because it's on a bus route, the way that projects get funded is that the council funds them, and so that's, even though we provide the priority, it's the council's preference on how to fund those projects that make those kinds of projects happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay. And that takes us into item 16, council and staff discussion on presentation topics, which is what we've had. Any further discussion on topics tonight? And item 17, any new business? 18, any unfinished business? And I would like to mention something I probably should have said during announcements, that we do have a work session next Monday night, May 11th, and the topic is going to be an overview and orientation about the charter and some discussion about that, and we've invited the Original Charter Commission, if they can attend, those of us, those who would like to attend that as well, to be recognized who they are and their role in that, and basically how it fits in with the foundation of our city government and how that operates. And with the start of a new council year, we'll just have a few kind of orientation-type topics to discuss, and also the Trash RFP will be on that agenda as well. That's May 11th, Monday night, next Monday at 5:30 PM. Any other unfinished business? Any other unfinished business? Councilman Prather?
Speaking of the TRASH RFP, are we going to get a copy of that prior to the meeting? It'd be nice to be able to review it first.
Yes.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Okay, 19, a German, do we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?